Thank you for your attention. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the presentation of the colors. It's by Erwin High School. Seems it's Erwin High School tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I ask for our -- a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. A second? A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's now time for the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by recognizing three of our school principals who will be retiring at the end of the month. All three have had a very dedicated and distinguished career that's devoted to students in Buncombe County. And we wish Eddie Birchfield, Leland Blankenship, and Larry Weigle only the best in their futures. Within the 31 years of service, Mr. Birchfield filled the role of principal in both the Career Education Center -- remember when we had that up here, Ms. Swanger? And Erwin High School. And most recently, he completed nine years as the leader of Valley Springs Middle School. Mr. Blankenship is retiring after 35 years in North Carolina educational service. He had previously worked in the roles of the Director of Career Technical Education and Director of Secondary Education. And I think he actually served in those twice, each twice for us here in Buncombe County. But for the past five years, Leland has served as the Principal of Inca Middle School. Mr. Weigle has dedicated 24 years of service to the state, with the seven most recent devoted to working as an excellent director for the Progressive Education Program. Congratulations and kudos for jobs well done, respective of all three administrators. And I'm looking around and knowing the humility of these three, that I knew that they wouldn't be here. So, in spirit, in spirit, let's give them a strong round of applause. Thanks to Mrs. Swanger and the team of advisors that worked so diligently on revising and developing, I think, what's going to be a very set of clear and concise strategic priorities. Earlier today, this afternoon, she facilitated a very collaborative work session with our board. And I would say that one of the most important responsibilities that a school system or charges that a school system has is to periodically review the statements of your mission and your vision, as well as those strategic priorities to ensure they fulfill the core needs and the purposes of the district. So, job well done for you, Ms. Swanger, and the staff. If you recall, Board, a recommendation that came to you from our Capital Outlet Committee was to identify and contract with an expert source in school facility security. And we were going to ask them to physically survey all of our campuses and bring back a recommendation, recommendations for best practices to improve the safety and security of those facilities. I've contacted Dr. Patterson and the Asheville City School System regarding a combination steering committee that would prepare requests on behalf of both school systems that would then go, Mr. Bryant, to the Capital Fund Commission for potential funding. It just makes sense, and I think the Board was wise to suggest that, that this is a venture that both the county and the city school system certainly would be wise to join, to prepare as a joint committee. I believe that Mr. Queen and Ms. McMahon will be serving, will be representing the Board on that particular committee. And I'm going to be asking Mr. Huff to be our administrative representative. So, and I think you'll be processing those meetings pretty soon, Mr. Huff. I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Murdock and Mr. Dewey Andrew. They are here with us tonight. They're representing Evelyn Charities. And they're actually here, I know Bill is going to be presenting an award for the graduation initiative, an annual award that we're always proud of our partnership with Evelyn. Dewey is here because he is the mastermind and the man behind the Williams Baldwin teaching, teacher campus apartments. And I'm so excited to say we are at full capacity now, all 24 units. I understand the option for housing that is affordable for teachers, especially new teachers, that that's been a frequent topic of inquiry. I believe, Ms. Lopez, at a lot of the teacher fairs that you've been at, so word is getting across the state that we have something unique here. So, we're very proud of that. And Mr. Murdock, Mr. Andrew are going to have a very exciting announcement to make about the teacher apartment and the leasing that's available there. I have a complete page to move into now because it is graduation time. Ceremonies have already been underway. Last Friday, the Early College graduated. They sent students across the stage at AB Tech. And tomorrow evening at 6:30 in the Richard Green Theater on the Robertson Campus, Pep will be holding their ceremony. And then on Sunday afternoon at 1:00 in the Kimmel Arena on the campus of UNC Asheville, the Nesbit Discovery Academy will have their -- at 4:00?
4:00.
Did you change the time?
I was just going to say.
4:00.
But you're welcome to stop by.
I'll be there early. I'll be there early. 4:00 on Sunday afternoon. All right. This will be the first graduating class of seniors that will receive their diplomas. So, we're just extremely proud of that accomplishment for the Nesbit Discovery Academy. Next Thursday, the 14th, Community High School will have their ceremony at Asheville Christian Academy. That'll begin at 6:00 in the afternoon. And then Friday, the 15th, begins graduation for our six traditional high schools. Inca High School will lead off with a ceremony in the U.S. Cellular Center at 7:00 that evening. And Jeff, I don't know what you guys will do because you're so used to having the last day and students out the door, and then you're rushing to graduate again. So, you actually have a day, I think, to prepare. So, we're going to expect a great ceremony. That's all I can say. The lineup of graduations the next day will begin with an outdoor ceremony that starts at 9:00 in the morning at the Owen High School Stadium. And then at 11:00, the program will be held at Cellular Center for the AC Reynolds High School seniors. And I see Ms. Sellers up there. She is excited. I can see that smile on her face. And then Erwin High School will follow with their ceremony that'll take place at 3:00 in the center. And the final graduation that day will be held for TC Robertson High School, and that will begin at 7:30. And then on Sunday afternoon, June 17th, we will mark our last graduation for North Buncombe High School. Those seniors will walk across the stage in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, and that will begin, Ms. Franklin, at 2:00. I know I've got that time correct. That hasn't changed in 20 years. All Board members are certainly welcomed at any or all of the ceremonies. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. We always save the best for last, do we not? That's all right over here. At this time, I will recognize Ms. Harris for our good news.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We have lots and lots and lots and lots of good news to get to today. First up, could Ms. Kristi Cheek come on down? She's going to tell us a little bit more about North Buncombe High School's Pro Start team and the wonderful year they've had so far.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. The government asked help out, too, or not? I want the hand help. Maybe this way will be great. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin and members of the Board. Last time, it was the Caliente Cowboys from Erwin High, where they received the third-place award from Louisville, $20,000 each in scholarships. And tonight, it is, there, what? There they are, the North Buncombe High School Pro Start team that we're going to honor tonight. Ashton English, Jake Norcon, Carly Plymouth, their instructor, Amy White, Mrs. Circe. Dr. Circe, you're here. Y'all come on down. Logan Carroll can't be with us. And I'm going to tell you about this amazing work that these students have done. So, not only did this team place first, and y'all can go like right over there, you're great-looking people.
Right here.
Right there. Mrs. Franklin likes you in the front.
Yeah, right where that cross is on the floor.
Not only did this team place first in North Carolina in the management event, what they had to do is create a restaurant. It was called the Rustic Daisy. I've heard all about it. They did a marketing concept, food menu, pricing, everything coming and going. It would be an entrepreneurship's dream come true. They placed first there. They also took second place in the nation in Providence, Rhode Island, where they competed against 49 other, six other teams, sorry, 46 other teams, and had superior workmanship and did an outstanding job. So, when we started Pro Start, I remember being up here one night and somebody said, "What is this program going to bring to our school system?" And I tell you, what it's going to bring is opportunity for everyone. And these students, they were recognized on the floor of the General Assembly last week, and they were able to visit the governor's house and the gardens and tour their kitchen as such an outstanding honor for them. Also, this program is able to afford them the opportunity to advance their post-secondary education, and that is helped by a wonderful amount of scholarships to the total of $162,500. Two of the students there will be graduating and one will be returning. So, our chances are, right now, one out of three will be looking very good to repeat this effort. But all of that, of course, is made possible by wonderful, wonderful people, including a dedicated advisor, Mrs. Amy White, who was recognized as the Teacher of the Year in North Carolina for CTE. And we are certainly proud of her efforts and all she contributes to North Buncombe High School. As you can see, I just want to thank her. She is a dedicated teacher. She does so much for that school, these students. It would not be the same. I'll never forget, when we first started, though, it was, "Are we going to make this successful?" Yes, is the answer, no doubt. We'll finish up with Reynolds High School this year, and then we're just going to sing the praises of every school. And I just need to tell you how proud I am because we are creating the workforce of the future. Maybe it's directly out of high school, maybe it's sometime down the road. But hospitality and tourism is going to be alive and well because of people like them. Thank you all so much. How exciting it is. And Mrs. Franklin, it's a picture.
Want to go, Tony? I'll go.
I'd like to have Josh Francis come on down. He's our senior supervisor in transportation. And he's here to announce tonight the Tracy Lee Calhoun Award for Bus Driver of the Year.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baldwin. Each year, an outstanding school bus driver is selected to receive the Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award, an award that was established in honor of Tracy, a 17-year-old high school student who lost her life when a school bus ran a stop sign in Raleigh and hit her car. The award is sponsored by Asheville Oil Company and members of the North Carolina Petroleum Makers Association, and is intended to promote school bus safety and to recognize an outstanding school bus driver. Every day, our drivers travel 15,000 miles transporting over 14,000 students on 261 buses. We commend all drivers for their skills behind the wheel, and we praise them for their safety record. Their commitment is exceptional. School administrators are asked to submit a nominee for this award, and transportation personnel review the qualifications of each person, and a winner is selected. Here with us tonight, presenting the award, is Ms. Kay Thorpe, representing Asheville Oil Company, and Ms. Jamie Slagel, Assistant Principal at Fairview Elementary.
If you think about it, school bus drivers have a tremendous responsibility and deserve any recognition for the awesome duty they do, they face every day, transporting our children to and from school. It is our company's hope that this award will focus attention on deserving drivers and bring about a continued dedication to school bus safety in our area. As a family-owned business, it is indeed an honor and a privilege that we can continue to present this award to a deserving bus driver in the Buncombe County school system.
So, I would like to tell you a little bit about the recipient of this award. I feel very blessed to have a great group of drivers at Fairview Elementary, and one of our drivers won the award this year. Marcia can be summed up in one word, exceptional. She is truly one of a kind. Marcia drives one of the EC buses at Fairview Elementary School daily. She leaves our school by 6:00 a.m., if not before, always with a smile on her face. She truly loves the children that she transports, and she treats them as her own. Ms. Marcia, as they call her, not only drives a bus for these children, but goes above and beyond to make them feel special. She brings each rider a gift around the holidays, brings cupcakes to have in the classroom when a student or students don't have them for their birthday, and cheers them on at various events like Special Olympics and Awards Day. They absolutely love her. Ms. Marcia wears many hats at our school. She's not only a bus driver, she is a morning receptionist in our front office, and she was a sub custodian at the beginning of the year until we could fill that position. On Fridays, she's often found delivering manna food packs in the afternoons around the building so that no one goes home hungry, again, all with a smile on her face. This year, she also drove two extra runs for students who were on an abbreviated day. And those two individual students were treated just like all her regular riders, and they received the same kindness and special gifts that everyone else received. Ms. Marcia has been known to go buy heaters for students in the winter and clothes and shoes for those needing them. She truly has a giving heart for kids. The most touching Ms. Marcia story came when she took in a student who rode her bus and had for many years, when his caregiver suddenly passed away and he had nowhere else to go. Marcia didn't even think twice. She became his foster family because she loved him that much and she had taken care of him for so many years as he rode her bus, because, again, he had no one else. As I said before, she is truly an exceptional lady. She is so much more to us than just a bus driver, and our school feels lucky to have her as part of our team. So, it is an honor to award School Bus Driver of the Year to Marcia Bailey.
I'm told that he is our county DMV, one of our county DMV trainers, and he is retired. So, oh, yes. So, come on down, Mr. Bailey. All right, for our next piece of good news, I would like to have Mr. David Ball come on down. He is our district athletic specialist. And Dr. Baldwin, if you'd like to come up here, he's going to say a few words. Mr. Ball was recently inducted into the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association Hall of Fame.
In March, David was one of four athletic directors in the state of North Carolina that was inducted into the North Carolina Athletic Directors Association Hall of Fame. And that is the 47th Annual Hall of Fame Ceremony. And there are 92 individuals over 47 years that have been elected to that. Tell you a little bit about David. Number one, he's probably turning as red as he can be because he is one humble person. And he had a station, Ben did a nice article. I encourage you to go to that on our website. But here's David's quote after winning this. "I'm a product of Buncombe County schools." Mr. Ball said, thanking various Erwin district teachers and coaches who influenced him. "We are all standing on the shoulder of others. We don't get to where we are without the support and help of many people." Now, I'm going to read to you a lot of accolades, but if you want to know David Ball, that statement sums it up. That's why he's been one of the most successful athletic directors and professionals in the state of North Carolina.
Also, pretty good-looking in that baseball uniform. Is that what you're doing? Woo, hey, David Ball!
I'm not touching that with a 10-foot ball. David graduated from Erwin High School in 1975, and for 36 years, he served in the capacity as teacher, coach, and 17 of those as athletic director at Erwin High School. Just a few accolades, could be here for a long, long time. In 2014, he was named the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Athletic Director of the Year for the entire state. He was named to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 100 to Remember in terms of athletic administrators. And at the national level, he received the NAAA State Award of Merit in 2009, and he became the 10th North Carolinian in history to receive the National Federation of High Schools Citation Award in 2014. So, once again, David, we're so proud of you. We're so thankful that you agreed to come out of retirement after I had to arm wrestle you for about 15 minutes to... Now, it wasn't arm wrestling. You came back with heart because you've always dedicated yourself to the betterment of kids in Buncombe County. So, we're just thankful that you are our district athletic specialist. And so, I'm going to ask Mr. Bryant to present a certificate to you. Yeah, and let people see what that ring looks like. That's a big ring, guys.
If Erica Grant could come forward. He's our BCS English Language Arts and Social Studies Specialist. He's here to tell us about a special young man and a poem that has gotten him some national attention.
Madam Board, members of the Chair, Dr. Baldwin, thank you for this opportunity to share some good news. And thank you to Dr. Baldwin and to Ms. Swanger for supporting Do the Right Thing in Buncombe County. I also thank you to the many BCS directors and Board members who attended the banquet last month to celebrate Do the Right Thing. Tonight, we're here to acknowledge Alex Gast, who will be our National Ambassador for the Do the Right Thing Initiative. The Do the Right Thing Writing Challenge is a collaborative effort between Buncombe County Schools, Asheville City Schools, and the National Campaign to Stop Violence. This provides an opportunity for students to be what we most want them to be in life. We want them to be leaders, and we want them to be agents of change. Through the Do the Right Thing Initiative, students are tasked to examine how youth violence affects them personally, to talk about what are the causes of youth violence, and also to explore what solutions can we come up with to youth violence. Alex, his mother, I presume, a parent, and North Buncombe Middle School Language Arts teacher, his teacher, Carrie Hampton. Carrie, would you please stand? Carrie was the teacher who helped Alex achieve this. They will receive an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, D.C. this summer, where they will work with other students and dignitaries and legislators to impact positively school violence, youth violence, and to make a change in this world like we talked about. Very soon, we're going to have a chance to hear, to recognize Alex and hear his poem, which is extraordinary, "7,000 Pairs of Shoes on the Capitol Lawn." That poem will be published and placed in the Library of Congress. So, it's a pretty major honor for Alex. However, before we do that, I also want to acknowledge the more than 350 intermediate and middle school students who also wrote for this competition. They came from seven different schools, and you can imagine now, thinking about Alex's accomplishment, over 350 students competed, and Alex's writing rose to the top. So, we're really proud of him for that. And we're also proud of the 350 students who took the courage to speak up and say something about this important issue. This year, considering that both the national news and the local news, and... This year, considering that both the national news and the local news, and the amount of youth violence that these students experienced, I think that we all felt there was a lot more poignancy in the writing this year. And I know that the more than 50 volunteers who came and read and scored the writing of these students, they too acknowledged this poignancy, and so did their teachers, who said not only that, but that as a result of this competition, they get to know their students better, they get to understand the challenges and the struggles, and they also get to be inspired by their students' perseverance and inspiration and hope in the messages that they send. So it's a really important project because it really gives us this opportunity to listen to our students, to ask for our students' voices, and to listen to our students. And we learn from them every time we do this project. Now, it's one thing for me to say this, but of course, it's much more valuable to hear the words of our students. So at this point, I'd like to call Alex to the stage, and we're going to give him an opportunity to receive a certificate for this, and we're also going to give an opportunity for you all to hear Alex's words and his poem. So Alex Gast, congratulations.
2012, the 14th of December, a day that I'm sure we all remember. Twenty-six people fall down dead, the once beautiful campus is now stained red, the Connecticut Academy, called Sandy Hook School, just entered a nightmare, scary and cruel. Why would a man do this? Was he mentally ill, addicted to the bottle, the trigger, or pill? We will never truly know the reasons. They shift and change and grow like the seasons. We can offer support all we desire, but change can't be made without fighting the fire. Sandy Hook was not the last, unspeakable violence is not in the past, 14,000 shoes on the Capitol lawn. They will never truly be gone, each pair represents a child that was killed. They were shot and their blood was spilled. When will adults take control? Can't they see the deadly toll? The nation's young are paying the price. All the kids in the world will not suffice, they will keep shooting, we will never be at ease. The pain will spread like a massive disease. Sympathetic thoughts are not enough, it's time to speak out and time to stand up. Violence can never end unless we fight, we have to take a stand for what is right. Children are dying, the nation's crying, but a river of tears won't bring a new dawn. How many shoes have to be laid on the Capitol lawn before this nation will stand? And tomorrow, when I awake, attending school is a gamble I take. We are not safe with these weapons out there. Why doesn't authority even care? The streets need to be swept clean from guns. How many more of your daughters and sons must take their last breaths, fall and die before this country will rise?
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know who to ask, but would it be possible for me to receive... I know that's going to the Library of Congress, but could I get a copy of that poem?
Autograph it.
It could be emailed to me, whatever. I'd just like to have a copy of that.
Do you have enough for each of us to get one?
Yeah, if it's not tonight, just whenever, if we could get that, it'd be great.
Those of us who went to the banquet already have them, so...
Yeah. I'm sorry, we're just conducting a little business here, Miss Harris.
Waiting patiently, I'm fine, I'm fine, real relaxed. So actually, for this next piece of good news, I would like everyone up here to move to the audience, and could my singers and audience move to the front?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me, I have to clear my throat. My name is Susan Hensley. It is my pleasure to be back at this place this evening as the interim Arts Education Specialist for Buncombe County Schools. I was the Arts Education Specialist for Buncombe County Schools for 27 years, and after five years of retirement, I've come back for just a semester, and it's such a pleasure to be here, and in a special pleasure to acknowledge these young people and the school they represent. TC Robertson High School Music Department has been honored with the Support Music Merit Award from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education. This award recognizes individual schools that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. 135 schools nationwide are recognized each year. TC Robertson is one of five schools in North Carolina to receive this year's award. To qualify for the award, each school answered detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, support for the music program, and community music-making programs. Responses were verified with school officials and reviewed by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. This award recognizes that TC Robertson is leading the way with learning opportunities as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act. ESSA recommends music and the arts as important elements of a well-rounded education for all children. Research into music education continues to demonstrate educational, cognitive, and social skill benefits for children who make music. Studies have indicated that music education lays the foundation for individual excellence in group settings, creative problem-solving, and flexibility in work situations, as well as learning how to give and receive constructive criticism to excel. It is my pleasure to introduce the music faculty of TC Robertson High School, Mr. Jim Kirkpatrick, band director and facilitator of the application process for this award. Mr. Kirkpatrick? Thank you. Sorry, I can't see over there without the glasses, and I can't read this with them. Ms. Elisa Baker, Choral Director, and Ms. Elizabeth Terry, String Orchestra Director. Would like to share the banner the school has been given to display for receiving the This is pretty cool. And I will say that each of the class, each director will receive a smaller banner to display in their classrooms. We appreciate the opportunity to share this achievement with you at this time. I would now like to introduce the TC Robertson Chamber Choir as representatives of the entire school music program. They will perform for you "Unc clouded Day," arranged by Sean Kirchner, under the direction of Elisa Baker.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Miss Franklin. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, Ben, thank you, guys. That was a good idea.
Do you have any regrets yet?
Yeah, you got two on the front row.
Dead gummit.
No, that was not true.
I got the text messages to prove otherwise.
Paula Gar... You can blame Paula, too, for her...
Nice. Alex Gast is from North Buncombe, and those TC Robertson kids were the first on their feet after he finished reading that, and that is just wonderful. I believe it's time for the curriculum feature.
Chair, the curriculum feature this evening is a nice blend of continued good news because there is good news to celebrate, but also reflecting back how important the graduation initiative is to Buncombe County Schools, a priority that's been in place for many years, and we're seeing the success of many hard-working educators and community partners. So we have partners with us this evening that I'm going to ask Kay Lamb, our graduation initiative director, to introduce, and share a little bit about the hard work that's happening in our schools, and we have two school winners here this evening.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, the graduation initiative is appreciative of the time on the agenda this evening and of the strong support that you've given us for so many years. We know that you share our desire to see every student graduate career and college-ready, and that you understand the incredible work that must be done at all academic levels to make this happen. As you are aware, our mission is to work with schools and the community to support students who are identified at risk of not successfully completing high school by improving awareness of student issues and by providing interventions to support these students and their families. We are also committed to examining the systemic, long-term changes in schools K-12 that must take place in order for us to sustain our solutions to decrease dropouts. That's the work we've been doing for over 10 years, and no one does that work with more excellence and success than the three professionals that I have the just blessing of working with, Jill Connor, Sharon Fish, and Emily Walters. I will share with you, on a sad note, that Sharon is not with us, she got a call at about 10 till 6 that her mother had been injured, and so they're on their way to the hospital. So she sends her regrets, and I ask that you keep her in your prayers. It's pretty serious. Also, I want to introduce Chastiva Wetherroy. Chastiva is an intern with the graduation initiative this year, so we have her... This is her first-ever board meeting, so quite an experience, I'm sure.
I hope you've had a good time.
Ms. Franklin always promises a good time. But I do want to brag on my team. Last year, these three ladies made 703 direct and indirect referrals to Evelyn Charities for assistance for these students that we serve and their families in order to keep them in school. The graduation specialist, along with school counselors and social workers, also worked with 556 students for whom they made referrals to other specialized community agencies, such as Mother Love, DSS, Goodwill, and many others. Additionally, they served 329 students through course advisement and registration in Twilight and Mini-Master. The total number of students served, both referrals and program-related, was 1,588 students. This is impressive work for three ladies that hustle all the time. But equally impressive is the research that supports the financial impact of what has been accomplished since the inception of the graduation initiative over 10 years ago. During that time, the number of students that have dropped out has decreased by an overall 57% from 444 dropouts. Award, toward academic success and graduation for all students. But before we do that, I am so happy to announce that the Compass Award has a new name of sorts. We have a new sponsor, along with our longtime partnership with Evelyn Charities. We'll be sharing the joy of recognizing schools each year with our new sponsor, the law firm of Campbell Shatley. It's really such a pleasure to announce that Chris Campbell and Dean Shatley have graciously joined us in our efforts to recognize principals, school leadership, and school communities who are truly making a difference. To have Chris and Dean on board with us is so special because they know, we know, that they not only understand schools and school communities from the legal aspect, but also from the human aspect as well, and those relationships and the importance of those. I've known Chris for many years, and I know that while he is focused on serving the board officially, he never wavers from the consideration of the best interests of our students. He is a dad to school-aged children and a staunch supporter of all children and young adolescents, and has a keen knowledge of the challenges they face. We couldn't ask for a better sponsor for the Compass Award. So, thank you, Chris. We really, really appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Kay, very much, absolutely. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, and board members, as an attorney, I believe firmly that you must maintain a sense of humor. So, I love lawyer jokes. So, when Bill approached me about this being an opportunity for us that we could be associated with the Compass Award, the first thing that came to mind is, what do you call an award named after a law firm? Thankfully, this is no joke, though, so I was able to very quickly get past that, but it's absolutely amazing that we're involved with this. This has been my 20th year serving this board and this school district. With all due respect to Dr. Baldwin, superintendents have come and gone, principals have come and gone, and board members have come and gone. But in my 20 years, the one thing that has been a steadfast constant for this school system and this community has been Evelyn Charities. And I think the vision that Mr. Evelyn had, that Bill Murdock has put into practice, and I think we would all agree, has probably even exceeded those early visions of what Evelyn Charities could be. To be associated with that is just a real, real pleasure and an honor for us. We get a lot of job satisfaction out of what we do, thinking that hopefully we help the school system do what it does, and Principal Robinson and Principal Thompson, who are receiving the award tonight, to be some way connected at all with the work that they do and the work that sets public education apart. The reason we're such advocates for public education at our firm is, we serve every single child. That sets you apart in Buncombe County, that sets you apart in the nation, it sets you apart in the world, and it's why the United States continues to be the model that so many countries look to, because we educate every single child. So, in closing, we appreciate being recognized, we don't deserve it. It's our honor to be connected in some way to Evelyn Charities and the work of Buncombe County schools. So, don't thank me, thank you, and please thank Evelyn Charities and primarily your principals for what they do. Thank you.
While we do believe the work we do is important, we consistently recognize that we couldn't do all the things we do for students and families without our partnership with Evelyn Charities. Shooting for a 90% graduation rate will take the best efforts of all of us to make that happen. Jill is going to share with you a few ways that we work with Bill Murdock and the Evelyn Charities to do the good things that we're able to do for students and families.
Evelyn Charities, early on, decided they didn't want to be an organization that said no or turned people away. Bill, you have truly lived by your words, and so has the staff and volunteers of Evelyn Charities. Evelyn does so many amazing things, from something small to something really big and costly. We are so fortunate to have the partnership between Evelyn and Buncombe County schools. Just to show how important that partnership is, I would like to share two stories where Bill, Susan, and Evelyn Charities stepped in. It was hard to decide what stories I was going to tell because there's so many, and the one that came to mind is, we dealt with a family that had a house fire that lost everything in the middle of the night. The students were able to come to school the next day, and so after meeting with the families, we realized, you know, they had no clothes, they had no food. So, the first thing that we did was, we picked up the phone and called, and I spoke with Susan and got all the supplies together with the help of the staff of the school, and we delivered it to the hotel where the Red Cross had put the family up. And when we got there, what we also realized was that the family had quite a few stu- or quite a few kids, and they did not all have beds. And so, this was 5:00 on a Friday afternoon. So, I picked up the phone, called Susan, and said, "Susan, this family's going to be staying here over the weekend, they don't have enough beds, there's people, there's children sleeping on the floor." Within 15 minutes, I'm walking to the hotel lobby, and Susan had called, and I told the receptionist, I said, "You're getting ready to get a call from Evelyn Charities," and the receptionist said, "They're an amazing organization," and I said, "Yes, they are." And that family was so thankful to get to stay together and sleep in beds over a crisis situation because of Evelyn. The next story that comes to mind was a family that the students stopped coming to school. And after we realized, after making a home visit, the reason the students stopped coming to school was because the family had family land and was forced to sell part of it to pay for bills. And the part that they sold was the part that their well was on, and they had no water, they had no resources. This family went six months without water. And, and I see Jan Greenhoe talking, this is one of her students at Community High School, but, and so Sharon Fish picked up the phone and called Bill Murdock. Bill tried to negotiate with the people that bought the land, it was not much negotiation, and what he did was made a few phone calls and provided this family with a well, and the students started to come to school because of the support of Evelyn Charities. And I could stand up here all night and talk about what a amazing organization that they are, and we are so lucky to have that partnership with them. Bill, would you like to say a few words?
Hi. Last Saturday, Joe Evelyn would have turned 93 years old. On his 80th birthday, and Dewey, I know you were there, Tony, I know, I know you were there, we gave Joe an unusual present. We created the Evelyn Center for Social Enterprise. Evelyn Charities was founded in 1991, as you all know the story pretty well, with $400 we received from a yard sale. And we kept getting great ideas, we kept getting good ideas from the community, we kept getting wonderful ideas from schools, and they just didn't quite fit the direct assistance part of Evelyn Charities, the housing, the medication, the eyeglasses, our new partnership with AVL, we were here, you know, just a month ago with the All Set Program. So, we decided we had to do more. There was more in the community to do what needed to be done than just what Evelyn Charities was doing at the time. So, we created this program, this another organization within the organization, to be able to do other things. And that's where the Andrew Institute for Leadership and Public Service came from. That's where teacher housing came from. And none of that would have happened if it hadn't been for the very first program we had, which was the graduation initiative. That set the path, that set the wheels going for all these other great programs we have, and just stay tuned, by the end of the year, you're going to hear about three more new ones. In fact, the board probably doesn't know about most of them anyway, so, yet, but, but that's what started, Tony, you remember in that little office we had by Sam's, that we sat there and talked about this, and decided, what would the name be? And, Tony, we, you know, Tony said we were just so tired of dropout prevention, and we had to do something positive, so we came up with the graduation initiative, which comes to everybody, we wanted everybody to graduate, not just the ones who might be struggling, but everyone to graduate. So, it's our great honor to work with all of you here at the board, certainly faculty, staff, teachers, administrators, and all the dedicated selfless servants that we have here in our community, in the school system, that every day do the things that Emily and Jill and Sharon do, and certainly our leader here with Kay. So, a lot of the great things Evelyn Charities is doing, I think we get far too much credit for things that happen in the community, because you all are the ones who are doing it. We're just a conduit, and I have nothing more than just supporting players. But it is a great honor to have our name and be part of the Compass Award. It's even a greater honor to share it with Campbell and Shatley this year, and I know we have two awards to give out, so counselor, if you wouldn't mind coming up and handing the awards.
We've got a few more words to say, obviously. I want to just share with the board very quickly the requirements that are looked at at each school that applies for the Compass Award. It's based on seven important components. One is positive relationships for every child. Two, a strong network of student support. Three, use of data for continual improvement. Four, focusing on transitions. Five, best use, the use of best instructional practices within the classroom. Six, parent and community outreach. And seven, a school culture that emphasizes graduation and post-graduation goals for all students. You might recall that most recently, in the past few years, our Compass Award winners have all been high schools, but this year, we want to recognize the outstanding work of a middle school. This middle school is proving that we can impact the climate for student success and the inclusiveness of every student into our efforts to help students and families realize family's shared goal of high school graduation. It is important to share that this middle school is a community school. The community school model is when a public school is the hub of the neighborhood, uniting families, educators, community partners, both nonprofit and businesses, to provide all students with quality academics, enrichment, health, and social services, and opportunities to succeed in school and in life. The first-ever Campbell Shatley Compass Award is awarded to Clyde Irwin Middle School. Well, Thompson's coming forward, and also all of your representatives, if you'll come and join him up front, that'd be wonderful. Before we present this lovely trophy, I've asked Emily Walters, you guys get to stand there while we talk about you, if that's okay, I've asked Emily Walters, who serves the entire Irwin District, to share with you a few reasons that Irwin deserves this recognition.
And it's my honor to present you all with this award, but the graduation initiative, Evelyn Charities, and the Campbell Shatley Law Firm are honored to present this award to Irwin Middle School. While there are many schools in the county who are working with our most vulnerable youth, no school has addressed the whole child more than Irwin Middle. Irwin Middle School has spent the last few years creating a network of services for their students and becoming a true community school for the children and their families. Irwin Middle has more support than I can mention in the time I have allotted, but I wanted to take a few minutes to highlight some of the initiatives that you all are doing. The first is the Parent Teacher Home Visitation Project. This program trains teachers on how to foster positive relationships with family, families through visiting them in their homes. The program, which was piloted this year, will begin next year with a group of teachers going out to many students' homes in the Irwin District. And this is supposed to gain positive relationships with the families, earn trust of the families, and open those lines of communications. This program is in addition to the 15 positive phone calls that each teacher has been making each month. Before these programs began, Irwin families felt that they only heard from the school if things were going wrong. Irwin Middle is working to change that mindset. The second one is the Homework Diners. This is a partnership with United Way, Linnea Burgavin, the school resource coordinator, community volunteers, and school staff. Homework Diners are a place where students and their families can come for homework help, receive a free catered meal. This is available to any K-12 student in the Irwin District. Another partnership with the United Way is our Early Warning Response System. This is a way where we identify students on all tiers and identify who needs the most support, while we also acknowledge students who are working hard and doing well, and are able to target positive behavior supports to those students. Another one that Linnea was telling me more about on the phone today is the Welcome Moms Program. Linnea has recruited three bilingual moms in the Irwin District, and anytime a new Irwin Middle student enrolls, they will get a call from a mom in their home language, offering their support, welcoming them to the district, and letting them know if they have any questions or concerns, they have someone to reach out to. Irwin Middle is also all about empowering parents and giving them a voice. In the spirit of that, they revamped their PTO program and made it a parent team. Instead of just focusing on the important things like fundraising and supporting students, what they also did was allowing parents to bring concerns and bring thoughts to the sit team and the administrators monthly. These are just a few of the many examples of all the positive things happening at Irwin Middle. None of this could be accomplished without the devotion of teachers, student services staff, administrators, community partners, parents, and the United Way. I can't wait to see how Irwin Middle will continue to grow and flourish as a community school. We want you all to know that Buncombe County Schools, Evelyn Charities, and the Campbell Shatley Law Firm recognizes all that you pour into your students on a daily basis. We thank you for what you do for your kids today and every day. You are appreciated.
Get in here for the Irwin District picture. Yeah. Yes, please do. Our second Campbell Shatley Compass Award this evening goes to Enka High School. If Principal Tanya Robinson and her team would come-
I was wondering why you brought your whole faculty.
The dropout rates at Enka have gradually declined over time, beginning with the inception of the graduation initiative in 2006. As you can see by the graph that you're going to be shared, it's going to be shared now, the reduction has been gradual but consistent, and that's what we're looking for. And, let me help you out a bit, in 2012-13, the cohort rate was 73.5%, and most recently in 2016-17, it-
staff, administrators, community partners, parents, and the United Way. I can't wait to see how Irwin Middle will continue to grow and flourish as a community school. We want you all to know that Buncombe County Schools, Evelyn Charities, and the Campbell Shatley Law Firm recognizes all that you pour into your students on a daily basis. We thank you for what you do for your kids today and every day. You are appreciated.
Get in here for the Irwin district picture. Yeah. Yes, please do. Mm-hmm. Our second Campbell Shatley Compass Award this evening goes to Eka High School. If Principal Tanya Robinson and her team would come. The dropout rates at Eka have gradually declined over time, beginning with the inception of the graduation initiative in 2006. As you can see by the graph that you're going to be shared, it's going to be shared now, the reduction has been gradual but consistent, and that's what we're looking for. And, let me help you out a bit. In 2012, 13, the cohort rate was 73.5 percent. And most recently, in 2016, 17, it was 87 percent. Good improvement there. Also, this graph depicts their actual dropout numbers for the last five years. You'll see in 2013, 14, there were 51. Oh, I lost it. Yeah. There were 51, and then dropped it down to the 20s, which we celebrate and love to see. But currently, and that's like as of today, stands at 14. And in talking with Sharon and seeing what she had written about Eka, she said, "We're committed to reducing that even more with the summer recovery program, the search and recovery, and also trying to get students back within those first 20 days of next school year." For those of you familiar with that whole dropout reporting procedure, we won't know until after the 20th day of next school year what those final numbers will be, and then it takes a couple of months for the state board to approve and act on those. According to Sharon, one of the strongest and best things going at Eka High School is the sit team. Mr. Geising, Geising, who is a science teacher also at Eka, is the chair of the sit team, and he's going to share a few of the goals that they have, and some of the things they've done to move them in this direction.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Geising. I'm the sit team chairperson. Members of the board, I'd just like to say that it's an honor to receive the Compass Award, and I was asked on behalf of Sharon to speak. And doing my research, when I think of the compass, I think there's four points, four cardinal points to a compass, northeast, south, and west. And I'd like to say that those four points at our school, and our, the faculty, the teachers, the administration, the office workers, the custodial workers who make the school safe, and the counselors, and our social worker who do a fine job. Now, when those four points bisect, you have the ordinal points, the northeast to southwest. And when those four groups of people come together, we implement programs and have committees that make a real difference, and I think work to keep our children in school and provide a lot of support. And one of the main things I think we do is we have an art committee. It's an at-risk committee. And they meet regularly. They talk, discuss, identify the students, and work with their families to make sure and help these children come to work or come to school every day. It's very, very, a lot of time and effort gets put into that. Another initiative that we implement is PBIS, Positive Behavior Initiative and Support, where we reward positive behavior, and we also like to reward and offer students incentive to come to school. Third point of that ordinal compass would be what we have a navigator program. It is a program where teachers are mentors, and they are assigned to a group of students that come in as a freshman, and they stay with these freshmen as mentors until they graduate. They're in charge of following them, their grades, making sure that they're attending school. They meet with them weekly and beyond, before school, after school, talk to them. They really make a difference with their close relationships that they're able to form over the four years. Finally, we have what we like to call the One Stop Attendance Shop. And it is an attendance makeup program. It is consistent. It is offered by Ms. Kitty McCurry, and I'm going to give her accolades. She does an excellent job. She helps identify those students' days that they need to make up. There's consistent times. It is a big part of students' recovering attendances. So those are what we are doing at Eka High School. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Geising covered lots that Sharon had, but there's one part that I do want to continue to include that Sharon had written. And she wrote, "Last but not least, an administrative team that is consistent, intentional, dependable, strong, exuberant, frank, empathetic, ethical, intelligent, resourceful, and fun." Things are changing at Eka High School, the demographic, the atmosphere, the graduation rate, the cohort rate. We're on the move, and the jets are flying high. Congratulations on being one of the recipients of this year's Compass Award. Gentlemen, do the honors. Jeff, are you sure you're involved in that administrative team?
I don't know.
I tell you. Compass Award, but I do want to thank all of our administrators and school staff throughout the county for their support of the graduation initiative, because it really is a team effort, an amazing team effort of everyone working together. And we appreciate this time on your agenda. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
It is. Bill Murdock, you got something you want to say?
Uh, yes, I do.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
I'm Dewey Andrew, and I came tonight to talk a little bit about teacher housing. It's always a pleasure to be with you folks, all members of the board, and Dr. Baldwin, and all of us, all of you that have helped. But it seems like time just flies, because it was two years ago that we sat in this room, I think with Evelyn and some of the people from Raleigh, and a group of concerned people that wanted to do something about teacher housing. And we decided that Evelyn did, that night, that we would. So we took on the project, and we decided that we would get the project done and manage it for a year. Those two years are up. I mean, it's, it's been two years, and I guess time flies when you're having fun, and I think we're having fun. But we are successful with what we're doing, and this is the fourth project of this type in the state. The only one west of Greensboro, actually west of Raleigh. So we're happy to talk about it. We have, during the first year, with the help of a lot of people, we got the structure together. When I say structure, I'm talking about forming the LLC, getting all the things in line to begin the bidding process. We did the bidding process, and fortunately, we're all with local people. Fortunately, Bruce Goforth and Goforth Construction were the low bidders. We were a little disappointed when we opened the bids, because all of them were above our budget. So we had to do what I call value engineering in order to get the project done and get the price down, so we could do it. And Bruce was a great help in that. He got with all the subs on the job, and we came out with the right price, and we finally started construction. And we finished construction last June, and had our dedication with Roy Williams in May, at the end of May of last year. So we've, we've had people in, we had started people moving in in July. We were 100% occupied by the end of July. Well, maybe it was sometime in August, but before school started, we were 100% occupied. So I think it surprised a lot of people, that maybe particularly some of the people in Raleigh that were here in that first meeting, that some of you know.
Wasn't that sweet?
Excuse me?
I said, wasn't that sweet to surprise those people in Raleigh?
It certainly was. I think maybe they thought because we were west of Raleigh, and they, everything is kind of east of Raleigh, that they, that maybe we couldn't do it. But we did, and as I say, we were 100% occupied during the, during the winter months. We've had a couple of teachers that have moved, but not because of the apartments, but because they moved out of the system. And, but we have those, we're working to fill those, and we will have those filled. This is a public-private combination of a project. There are no tax dollars that are involved. But just to bring everybody up to date how this happened, the county provided the land, county government, it was excess land that they had, that they were not using. The State and Employees Credit Union Foundation provided the money. They gave us a $2.835 million loan to build the apartments. They did a 15-year amortization. So we are paying back that loan as we speak. But they also gave us a couple of months of, I guess you'd call it, free rent, because we were able to take the money that we got for rent and put it in a kitty in case we have an emergency. So that was another great benefit for us. And we had a lot of people that, that helped us, and some of them are sitting here on the, on the board. Of course, Dr. Baldwin has been part of this since the beginning. He and Bill Murdock and myself formed the LLC to build it, manage it, take the responsibility for it. Campbell Shatley certainly has helped us with our legal work and guided us through the legal process of doing the bidding, and also the LLC and so forth. And I have to recognize Dr. Pat Bryant, because the group at Biltmore Church came for two years in a row and helped us do planting for all of our landscaping. And I can say that he worked hard. So anyway, the other thing I'd like to do, you know, when you talk about rents in Asheville, we were able to be, to rent these apartments. Our starting rent was $915 a month for a two-bedroom, two-bath, two-lockout bedrooms, so that teachers could share the apartments if they wanted to. And at this, today, being our first anniversary, we've been very successful with it, we're going to lower the rents for our teachers. You don't hear about that very much, but we've been able to work on some economies. We've, it's worked out that maybe some of our projections, we weren't quite right, but we're going to pass along all of the savings that we've had to the teachers. And so at the end of June, we'll be lowering the rents to 900 a month instead of 915. And we'll also be helping them with some of their utility costs. It'll total about $10,000 a year for lowering of the cost for our teachers. Now, I also want to thank a couple of other people, maybe two or three. Cynthia Lopez, is Cynthia here? I didn't see her.
She's there.
Okay. Cynthia Lopez and Tiffany McCants. Tiffany with Cynthia, of course, being the HR director, and Tiffany being Director of Purchasing. Those two ladies worked very hard, and Tiffany's here. Okay? Those two ladies worked very hard in getting the tenants for the apartments, and they did fill them up. So we thank them for that. You know, you can build a building, but if you don't have anybody paying the rent, you can't make any payments back to the people that supplied the money. So we certainly thank them for what they did. They certainly worked hard, and are working hard to fill the apartments again. So thanks to those ladies. Tiffany is a resident of one of the apartments, and she will be taking over the management of the apartments in July. And I'm going to retire. So anyway, thank you all for being here. We thank everyone that helped us. It's been a good project for Evelyn. Certainly, it's a good, it's a great project, I think, for the county school system and the city school system, because we also have seven teachers in the city school system in the apartments, and 17 from the county system. So with that, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Board? Thank you, Mr.
I have, I have.
Oh, Lord.
Just one, I'd like Mr. Murdock to repeat, what did you say when he said he's retiring? He's mistaken? Okay, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. All right, it is now time for a public comment. I understand we have one.
Yes, ma'am, we have one public comment. That would be Mindy Smith of Asheville discussing Girl Scouts today.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and audience. My name is Mindy Smith, and I am your local contact from Girl Scouts here in Buncombe County. Not only do I use the confidence that I developed as a Girl Scout growing up to channel my inner superwoman hero and powers, but I run 100-mile trail races, and I want to share my passion with other girls in our county for Girl Scouts. Did you know that Girl Scouts is the all-inclusive, female-only, premier leadership program for girls in grades K through 12? Yes, we go all the way to high school. We do a lot more than just selling tasty treats to you all and going camping. Girl Scouts exists to help girls develop a stronger sense of self, learn and display positive values, seek challenges, and learn from their setbacks, form and maintain healthy relationships, and identify and solve community problems. Girl Scout troops, the most common form of participation in our program, are completely volunteer-driven, so we are always keeping our eye open for adults who could be potential role models for our girls. Did you know that we have high school girls traveling to West Virginia this summer to do high adventure tasks and hobbies like kayaking and rock climbing? These funds to travel were raised completely by the girls selling Girl Scout cookies. Also, we have middle schools right here in Buncombe County who are taking equine therapy to foster homes to serve our local youth in need. How about our elementary-aged girls who are earning their detective and home scientist badges and learning about STEM right outside of the classroom? Lastly, and one of our proudest, we recently had five area high school girls serve as delegates to the UN on the Commission on the Status of Women. That is huge. Our program is by girls, for girls, and we need every adult in this room and who's watching to remember that in Girl Scouts, girls craft their own adventure and their own agenda. Principals and school administrators, help us reach girls all year long by allowing us to visit with your girls during lunch or another time that's convenient to them, or let me come and host a sample troop meeting, do something fun with them. Families that are present here this evening, please know that Girl Scouts is a great and affordable option for your daughter if she is ready to unleash her inner superstar. Let us help you help her. Feel free to contact me right here, I'm in Asheville. My name is Mindy Smith. If you're interested in hearing about our summer program opportunities or finding a troop, please reach out. I appreciate your time this evening, and I look forward to working with every individual in this room. And when I come back in the fall, I will bring goodies and an informational goodie bag.
The next item on the agenda is the action agenda. First item is Board Amendment Number Eight. Do board members have questions for Ms. Frisbee?
No.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the budget amendment number eight.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, the Nesbit Discovery Academy Freezer Cooler Replacement Project Authorization to Award the Contract. Are there questions from the board?
I had a question.
Yes, and I believe Lisa Payne and Clark Wyatt are assigned to this item.
Okay. Do y'all want to come down, or you want me to just ask? Maybe so, just, yeah. Everybody's been on camera tonight, you need to share in the excitement.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, and Chair, members of the board. Will there be any questions?
So, and you may just have to jog my memory here, but I know we are going on four years getting ready to graduate our senior class for the Nesbit Discovery Academy, so... Why are we replacing a freezer? Are we, I can't remember, did we replace that before? I'm trying, was it new or not new?
The Discovery Academy was built, their freezer cooler was not put in place, but we've got an existing one here at Central Office, and that one was done in the mid-to-late 90s. It's very old and it's very tired, so they're getting a new one, they're getting access to a new one.
Thank you, that makes me feel so much better, and thank you for jogging my memory because I was just a little concerned if it was only four years old.
There wasn't one in this phase, so that's it, it was an old one.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one.
Yes?
Would you mind giving me a scope of the work that is involved with this project and the costs that are entailed?
I was not involved in the original contract, so I may have to ask Carol Faid, do you know the answer to that question in more detail? I can certainly, Clark says he can speak to it.
I can't get into real detail, but basically, the existence, do you know where the existing freezer is located, right outside? So, it will be taken down, totally taken down, and a brand-new freezer cooler put in its place. It requires some loading, the loading dock area where we back trucks in, they bring truck and trailer loads of food to the freezer, so, you know, there'll be some work done at the dock area, but basically, the entire structure is going to be removed and replaced with a brand-new unit. Yeah, the current one's leaking from the ceiling, the cold air, because you're staying in minus, you know, it constantly stays in sub-zero, and it just gets, the condensation from outside is freezing, freezing on the slab, but it's, that's why the whole thing's got to be taken down and redone.
Is this a freezer for the whole county, not just for...
That's correct.
Yeah, I think that's some of the confusion. This is a storage place for frozen foods for the entire county.
That's right, it is. It serves Nesbit Discovery, but it also serves all of our other schools. So, it's just, it's aged itself, it's reached the end of its life, and it needs to be redone. It is a safety issue. We have four, thankfully, minor workman's comp to date, starting in 2007. My staff, I have to give them a huge shout-out, they've done a beautiful job managing inventory and getting everything out of there to be ready for this project. And US Foods, our distributor, in North Carolina Department of Agriculture will be bringing our food next year while the freezer cooler is not operable, and that was, that was a kind of a brilliant task that we were able to pull off.
It's a very large place. If you want a tour, Mr. Wyatt, can you give it to you?
It is a large place, and right now, when you open the door, every time you open the door, the hot temperature from outside hits it, so that kind of causes the ice buildup. And the beauty of the new design is that it's going to be offset, so there won't be any through traffic, there'll only be certain individuals that can go into it, which makes us feel good as we approach the school safety initiative. Certainly will protect the food from any terrorist activity. It's real, that's true, that's on that list, so...
Sorry.
I know, it's okay, I'm a vigilant, you know, I'm kind of passionate about my food.
Visioning throwing ice cubes at Clark.
Well, we actually had Steve walk in last week, and he came in, he got a little ding, he had a little thing on his head, a piece of ice fell down, so we're like, it's going to be fixed, it's going to be fixed.
Other questions, board members? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That was not a vote, my steeze was not a vote.
What?
I just wanted to make sure you knew my steeze was not a vote.
Inca High School Use of Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment, Mr. David Ball. A motion, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Do I have questions from the board? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hawk Creek Elementary School Authorization of Change Order to Increase Scope of Re-Roofing. Questions from the board?
I have one that may be, it may go to Mr. Campbell. So, we're adding to a project that was bid, but not rebidding, and I'm guessing because it's gotten to us at this point, that's obviously okay for us to do. I guess my question would be, and maybe somebody else's staff could tell me, it would seem to me that we've saved, there's got to be some time and cost involved if we weren't doing it this way. This seems to be an efficient way as long as we're dotting our i's and crossing the t's properly so that we're not violating some law or statute somewhere in the way we're going about doing this.
And I believe we're including alternates from the original bid, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the same price, you know, the original bid, the price is the essential save, so there's a globalization charge, a heat transfer, a panel stuff, you know, so you can also be rebid.
There's no percentage number in the law that you go by, you go by something that we refer to as the cardinal change rule. Are you adding a new project to a current project? That's what you can't do. But here, they're adding add-alternates that were part of the original bid, so we didn't have any legal concerns with it.
And the reason, I'm guessing that all this, it's got to be phased simply because of the amount of time it takes to do it, the amount of money that's available when it becomes available, I would guess. I mean, you wouldn't do this at your home, you would have your roof replaced at your home all at one time, but just help me understand, and maybe the public too, kind of some of the process with that, because as we go through more of these projects, it's maybe something that we ought to look at because we're running into, costs are going up and having some bids, and I think one of the ones, maybe the Inca one, or I can't remember which one, but Mr. Fairley said, when we first put it out, we had no bidders, and had to actually go back and bring folks by the hand to the table to bid, and so if you can kind of just touch on that a little bit.
Basically, our roofs, because we're so large, we can't afford to re-roof the power facility, we have to do a few sections that are, that make sense in the process of re-roofing and phase matter, and I'm thinking, is your idea great, maybe did a higher roof, you know, add off to the type of situation where it's like, I'll bet, maybe just higher, the prices, it might make sense.
And that's where I was going with that, is that maybe something that's a new strategy, for lack of a better term. Obviously, depending on the number of phases and the size, you're going to run into a point where it might not work, but because the economy of scale, and then the economy as well, and the things that are going on there, and the building climate, and where we are with the School Capital Fund Commission on the available funds, I'm just wondering if that might not be a strategy that perhaps could, perhaps could be positive for us in some other area as well.
And just for clarification, were these part of the original bid as add-alternates, or they're just alternates to the additional work proposal from the contractor? The original bid? Okay, and then some additional work on top of that? Right, okay, and it's not more than 50% of the original bid amount, so again, we're fine with it? Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Here, let me repeat what you said, let me repeat what you said.
Y'all friends are... The alternates are, that were part of the original contract, or...
House areas, and the additional square footage, I think it's 8,000 square feet, is an addition that was not an add-alternate or part of the original contract.
But we're good moving forward, Craig?
Correct.
I thought we were.
Okay, thank you for all that information. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we authorize this change order, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the action agenda is the nomination for NCSBA 2018 Legislative Committee. I would entertain a motion to nominate a representative to serve on this committee.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a nomination, please.
Yes?
I would like to nominate Mr. Bryant, Pat Bryant, to serve on this committee for reasons that I feel that Pat is very level-headed and is able to see all sides of an issue and is very thoughtful, and I think is somebody who would represent us in western North Carolina well in our future endeavors with the upcoming legislative process.
All right, are there other nominations?
We need a second, I'm happy to second that one.
I would entertain a second.
There you go.
Uh-huh, and so, that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it...
Chair, I abstain, I just, I don't vote for myself.
Yeah, you can abstain. The problem that bothers me is that she said you were level-headed.
Well, I... Peggy can vouch for this, but I laughed at that.
He's more level-headed than I am, maybe that's my barometer. He's much calmer than me.
He's a great representative in this capacity. Level-headed, I'm not really sure. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda are the minutes for May 3, 2018 Special Calls Session, May 3, 2018 Open Session, the Personnel Report with Addendum, Approval of the 2017-18 Facilities Report, AB Tech Community College College Board of Trustees Reappointment, CTE Local Plan and Approval, Renewal of the Driver's Education Contract with Mountain Professionals, Renewal of the GPS System Contract for Transportation Department. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next set of information, on the information agendas, the finance reports, the notification of informal construction and repair projects and change orders, policies for first reading, policy 1320, which is Title I, that's also 3560, policy 2670, the Business Advisory Council, 3110, Innovation in Curriculum and Instruction, 7510 is leave, 7520 is family and medical leave, 7630 is non-licensed or classified employee compensation, 8305R is the Federal Grant Administration and Procurement Procedures. Our next board meeting will be June the 28th, it's the final one of this year, and will be at 2 o'clock here in the Minitorium, and the next board, regular board meeting is August 9 at 6:30 PM here in the Minitorium. And the reason we had to move that board meeting is because our administrators are having their conference, and they're going to learn how to zip line, and we want to make all of that available to them, so we have moved our meeting to the 9th of August and hope that all of them will appear in one piece. My team on the football field and not on a zip line. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was thinking, could I get a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.